Are we on? Nope, here we are. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Lahana City Council to order. If you'd all stand for our invocation, which will be given by, or be given by me. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here this evening as the dawn of Independence Day draws near. We pray for wisdom and guidance on this eve of liberty. Let us unite in celebration of a nation strong and free. Grant us the strength to champion what is right. We invoke the spirit of those who came before, the brave patriots who fought for liberty's embrace. Their sacrifice and valor forever we adore. May their legacy guide us with unwavering grace. As we honor the birth of our great land, may we remember the diversity we hold dear. A tapestry of voices, united hand in hand, inclusive and equal, erasing every fear. Grant us the wisdom to listen with open hearts, to hear the concerns of every citizen's voice. Guide us on this path as we work and strive in this meeting. As we honor our nation's birth, may we thrive. Amen. Please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield.
Ramirez. Velasquez.
Present.
McIntyre. Ayala.
Here.
Montoya.
Here.
Vila.
Here.
Pantoia.
All right, minutes of the previous meeting. Any motions or corrections?
I have an addition. I was reading it on page three of the committee board reports on my comments, Jackson, Mississippi, where they had tons. I'd just like to add in their infrastructure problems. Make it more readable for people who read it, especially the library.
Anything else?
That's it.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously with our two that are absent tonight. Citizens' participation. Anyone for citizens' participation? You raise your hand first. And even though we all know who you are, the people on camera still need to know your name. Let me get your mic on there. You've got to hit that button.
Douglas Golding.
You've got to hit the button.
Douglas Golding, 1316 Lincoln Avenue in Lahana. I, many years ago, I brought forth some ideas. I know we're looking at a city sales tax. But I'd like to propose, in addition, or other than that, let's look at raising some revenue. I brought some ideas many years ago, not to the council, but to our well, I won't name it. That's what I thought. And nothing was ever done with it. I also, has anybody heard, seen my ideas on the golf course?
I have.
I handed those out to the last meeting.
All right, I appreciate that. And that's what this is in reference to.
Mr. Jackson, do you still have a copy of those? I think Shannon, are you the only one that's missing it? We just need one when you get a chance, sir.
My brother and his wife track Fifth Wheel and travel in this winter, snow birding into the north in the summer. And they look for opportunities in town, so that some of the ideas I have on there are ideas that other communities are currently using and are successful. If you, you know, we had another increase on the rates at the golf course. And I, I'm not against, you know, prices going up. But it sure goes down a little better if you're offering a better product. There are changes to the golf course. Got tons of room out there. There's no reason that that course could not present itself as two different nine-hole layouts. Some would require some capital outlay, some simply mowing some additional tee boxes. And then some of the ideas I presented, I think, I gave a copy to Mr. Vela. He called me back and was going to bring it up at the meeting as well. Many of the ideas to raise revenue, like I said, I gave to the city 15 years ago. And one idea that was on there, which was done, was moving the driving range to its current location, which I applaud. And where it was, was very dangerous. People out there hitting golf balls on the range that went onto Number One Fairway where people were playing was not good. And you have the same or a worse situation with the chipping green where it's located. It's probably 30 yards left of Number One Fairway and about 160 yard, 70 yards out from the white tee box. If the chipping green was used more than it is, I would be surprised if somebody hadn't gotten yet because people teeing off from one, myself included, have sprayed balls over in that direction. So it's not safe to be over there chipping when people are playing the course and teeing off Number One. That was our other recommendation, that that be moved at the same time that the driving range was. It doesn't have to be a fully functional green for chipping practice. You know, greens are expensive, but it doesn't have to be one that's playable as a whole. And the beauty of it is it frees up that green to be used for the golf course instead of just chipping, which I think one or two people use. But there are other ideas on there. Senior discount days. My brother and his wife stop in towns that offer these. Make sure they're there on the day that it's offered so that they can play. Packages. I would think the restaurant would be, would entertain an idea of eat and play package. Lots of people fly in the airport. Might want to play a round of golf and then eat at the restaurant benefiting both. K O A, he might be interested in going together with a stay and play. Also, other types of memberships. There's lots of older people that don't play that much. Punch cards work in all kinds of different areas. I know I've gone over that one.
Thank you.
Those ideas are all.
And like I said, everyone got one. We'll get one to Shannon. And also our golf experts in Lahana has one as well, too.
Just for information, I would serve on the committee, even lead it if that's your desire.
I do like your idea of a stay and play with the K O A. I think that'd be another source of revenue. Have you talked to anybody from the K O A? The owner?
No, I gave the idea, you know, I mean, I think the city owns the golf course. I mean, I would be happy to do it, but I'm not associated with the city in that respect or authorized to make a deal.
Bill, we'll get to that.
Okay. Something that the city or committee should.
I do like that idea.
Hey Doug, and I just wanted to say thank you for the handwritten card that Janet and you for us mowing, you know, and really appreciate that. And, you know, and I did pass that on to, you know, Keith and the water department. Appreciate it.
Rick, if we have to use funds, can we use conservation funds or G O Co. funds to support that?
We can look at that.
Okay. After the committee gets together, decides what needs to be done? Because 15 years, we could do better than that.
It's the same course it was when it was put in it. There's one hope that's been changed.
Anyone else for citizens' participation?
Connie Shane at 1321 Park Avenue. I just want to update on, it said here about, that I talked about the white ducks been dropped off at the park. That was the last meeting on a Monday. And Fish and Wildlife were going to come. It was across the street at an owner's house. And then a week later, he told me they never did come. And there was five left, and they were stolen. They were stolen. But she has been laying a lot of eggs over at the park. They seem to be happy at the park where a lot of people helped feeding and giving them water. So we just have to keep educating the people about not touching the eggs. And I see a lot of parents that are real good about that, but then suddenly, and then one was broken. The contents came out, so. So a few of them bit stolen. There's about 10 there now, so. I just want to update. Fish and Wildlife did not come, and then they were stolen a couple of days later. Across the street, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did they fix that duck feeder, that young duck?
No, no.
Rotary?
No, that was broken. It was broken two times. And then the third time, somebody took out the whole post. The top part, you know, the first time, two times, they couldn't get to the coins in the middle part. But then the third time, they took the, all the whole thing and the post. So there's no, there's no use even putting them. They're not going to get that much money anyway. It was, it's kind of silly.
I'll ask Ruttery.
I don't see, you know, any reason to put another one back. They'll take it again.
Yeah, I don't think it was about the money. I think it was more, you know, to have some.
Yeah. It's happened three times, so I don't see.
Maybe you'll want. Without money being put in to be able to check what's the status tomorrow.
They destroyed it the day after. They put it in.
Any other citizen participation? Now, I know I know your name, but you have to say it for the camera as well, too.
Jeffrey Rumpf, Opera House Pizzeria, Lahana. Hi. Obviously, I'm coming from work. Did the best I could. I felt compelled to come, in part because it's before holiday, and I thought it might be quiet and a good time. But I felt compelled to come because I think you need to hear how small businesses are hurting here. The dress shop is out of business. The shop next to your daughter is going out of business. Ginny barely makes it by every month in the bookstore, and I barely make it by. My bank account, the last two months, have had $433 in it and $428 after paying my boys. Can't pay myself. Can't pay myself. I've been at it for almost a year, July 28th. I'm guessing everyone here gets paid every time, all the time, their full salary. They never have to worry about it or question it. They make their bills. And I've been listening to the meetings. And I hear things about anonymous letters, accusations, true or false, I don't care. I care, but I don't care for the purpose it is. I can't think of everything, but, oh, 10% increases in our electric. I've been here for four years. Had all of our tools robbed, had fires set to our trash cans twice. Vehicles hit three times, including one for delivery that sent me back because I wanted to add delivery to what we're doing. Couldn't do it. No investigations into anything. No findings of anybody, any guilt, any responsibility. We can't do this. We can't make it. We can't make it. We need your help. And I don't want to hear, it's not my fault, it's their fault, we couldn't do anything about this, whatever. Our gas has gone up 23.9 and 24.9, whatever it was. It's like 50% in a year and a half, whatever it is. And you guys just approved another 10% hike in the electric. Like I said, two hikes on the electric in the last year and whatever months. And the folks that are coming in, fantastic. I'm glad they're going to take over the old Walmart building. But I'm hearing they're getting a sweetheart deal. And that marketplace isn't getting a sweetheart, the dress shop isn't getting a sweetheart deal. I'm not getting a sweetheart deal. The bookstore isn't getting a sweetheart deal. I don't want to know the details. I don't care about the details. But the point is, small businesses need help. I came here and chose Lahana and physically did the work on the building myself. And I can tell you, after talking to different business owners, I don't want to put people on the spot, but one person has been, I'm just going to talk for myself. One person has been in my pizzeria one time. Another person hasn't been at all. Another person hasn't been at all. Another one is a big fan. Another one has been in several times. Another one has never been in at all. And another one has never been in at all. No one's interested in pizza for a year, really? Ginny tells me not one of you has been in her bookstore ever. Maybe she missed someone one time. But you got to lead by example. And you can't be worrying about who wants to be mayor next and who wants to be the next state representative. And who, that'll all work itself out when you do a good job here. I think that's fair to say. Who cares, except for you, where you're going to try to move up next? Because we're trying to pay the electric bill, and I can't do it. And it's not just me. How many restaurants went down last year here? Dress shop, the marketplace, bookstore, and meal on the edge. We need help. We need leadership. We need people to make tough decisions in favor of the small businesses that are here or came here. I'm missing my job right now. We don't close until seven. I left him alone. I barely make payroll. I can't pay myself 11-plus months in. And now I have a former employee accusing me of stealing tip money. That's pretty bad. This is pretty bad. And I'm just really frustrated. And when I watch the meetings and I see it's led by 10% electric hikes and ducks and he's being accused and anonymous letters, and how does this serve me? How does this serve the bookstore? How does this serve the marketplace? It doesn't. It doesn't. If you guys were in my shoes and you didn't have a guaranteed paycheck, you might feel the same way. And I have a guaranteed paycheck. I only pay me if I make enough money to pay me. But everyone here, I'm pretty sure, gets paid regardless. Even if you're horrible at your job, you still get paid. Not me. Even if I'm great at my job, I still don't get paid. I got to make money. We need help. The small businesses need help to survive. I would have brought my guys, but I have some customers who need to be served right now, so I couldn't take them with me.
I would just like to say that I don't understand where you're coming from. I work in the banking industry, and I work with a lot of small businesses. And I've been to the restaurants that have been recently established. And I also shop all the time at the lighthouse for gifts. And, you know, I think that a lot of the small businesses, not saying you, but there's a lot that don't have experience in what they're getting into. They don't, they're not ready for what they're getting into. So I know that I have been trying to help people that I know that failed to try to get the education and the knowledge that they need to run a business. I think it's sometimes food quality. It's sometimes, you know, the environment. There's a lot of different things that are going into that. And I've been here for 48 years.
Bookstore's been there for over 20. And I get a 4.9 out of five stars. That's a five-star restaurant.
Well, like I said, I'm not saying it's directly you.
I'm just saying, I mean, you can't be hiking up our rates and expecting us to stay or stay in business. We can't do it. 95% of everything in my restaurant is used. And I pinch every single penny to make it, every single paycheck. Pinch every single penny. If I could pinch more pennies, I'd pay me. But I had no more pennies to pinch. And you can't say that all these businesses are leaving because every one of them is incompetent. I'm sure any one of you could find things you could cut out of their budget or make a little bit better or whatever. But I sincerely doubt that everyone is incompetent, and they deserve to fail. Many of them have been here for years, too, so. The point isn't who's, it's not my fault, not my fault, not my fault. Because I heard that enough in the meetings the last three weeks. It was really, I got to tell you, I kept thinking eight-year-old. It's not my fault. He's doing it. I'm doing it. I'm not doing it. He's doing it. It's not my fault. That's all I kept hearing. That's not leadership. That's not helping the community. All about scandal. Figure that out on your own, but help the community. That's why you got the title. Please. I don't want to make enemies with people here. I'm asking you for help to do what you're supposed to do to help us. Because we're leaving. I mean, people are leaving. And that wasn't my intention to come here to leave.
You know, Jeff, I know you've got some D M S O B, make sure you don't pour business money. And we are trying to get that back through the state. Now, you know, and I've been doing government for over 40 years. And that's the first time that I've ever seen the federal governments or state government jump in and help local businesses like that. And that program, every one of the six businesses, it helped. You know, I wish we could get more of those type programs to help.
Which one was that, Rick?
The make-street-old-for-business.
Oh. Also, Community Development Block grant loans. They're available with Danielle Berg. Her office is at the college. I don't know how.
I know.
Ask her about any assistance that might be available to you.
Stuff like that 10% rate hike you guys passed. It's not just the 10%, it's demoralizing. I don't know every circumstance. I don't know if you're in a rock and a hard place, but it's not just, I just lost 10 more percent. It's that I lost 10% and I'm getting crushed. Why am I pinching more pennies tonight at midnight, trying to make this work? Because 10% just keeps getting eroded away out to sea, out to sea, out to sea. I'm telling you, if you were in my shoes, you might feel the same way. I just, I'm begging for your help. And I'm here also on behalf of several other businesses that I've talked to and I've mentioned who probably don't have the, whatever, to show up and say it to your faces. And I try not to be confrontational. That's why I'm looking down. So we need your help. Support physically, financially, emotionally, whatever. I mean, I had a police officer come in last week who I've had problems with that he's been trying to help me with. And he said he just came in. I said, what's the matter? Nothing. I just want to see how you're doing. Want to see if you're okay. How you doing? Didn't last long, but it was 20 minutes. I felt like it was nice to know he went out of his way to do that. He didn't even spend a dime, but he did it. Something. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizens' participation? Moving on, new business. Mr. Maloff is not here, so Mr. Klein.
Okay, now I'm going to do Maloff, you know. So here we go. By title only.
I introduce this ordinance to be read by title only.
Okay, I'll do it. An ordinance calling for an election on November 7th, 2023 to authorize the imposition of an additional 1% sales tax on retail sales within the city of Lahana. Setting the title and content of the valid issue for the election, providing other matters and ratifying actions previously taken thereto, and providing the effective date of this ordinance.
I motion to place this on the 1% tax on retail sales on the November 7th, 2023 ballot.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This ordinance is written wrong. All it is is a carbon copy of what last year's was. It's not going to fly with the citizens, I don't believe. We, we have just recently raised rates in utilities. And last August, we paid off the wastewater treatment, which was being paid by the $17 a month charge that every household gets. And the savings there for the balance of that year was $200,000 estimated. The utility costs that are going to come up, they're going to be variable. It's not like it was reported last month, $11.91. That depends on your using of the various utilities that we raised on. And we haven't had a tax increase since 1982. Some people said it was 1978. But the fact of the matter is that we need an ordinance that says we're going to have a 1%, 2%, 3% increase in sales tax and what it's going to be used for. We need some accountability on where, if it passes, where it's going to be, how the spending is progressing. And we should have a sunset on it, meaning it should stop for review. And then it can be brought up again. But I don't, I think we just got to go back to the drawing board and ask the city attorney to come up with something like Pueblo did and Pueblo West. And they're, they're doing pretty good as far as the tax base. And as this gentleman was talking, we have to put more emphasis on our downtown area. If some of you will recall, I did the invocation last meeting, and I did talk specifically about that. And I wrote it directly from what we always have on our front page. Envision a safe flourishing downtown that provides a strong commercial tax base. And I also added their infrastructure improvements. So if this tax passes, I think we got to have a little bit more detail for the public. It has to be restrained. It has to be more taken care of because we don't have the downtown businesses that we had back in '82. And their, their increases in building and sales tax, that's good. And one negative thing that we've had recently, and then I'm done, is that we had a guy that come in here, opened up a business, a retail business, ran it for a year, never paid a dime of city sales tax. And I'm not sure if Dean is progressing on that to collect that. Huh? He is? Okay.
Yeah.
Who?
The state of Colorado.
Oh, are they acting an R Oh, are they acting on our behalf, too? Okay, that's, that's good to know. And I hope that works.
Well, me, too.
Because this guy is in California now, and he's making money hand over fist, but I don't like the idea of this ordinance, the way it's presented. The only thing that's changed from this one to from the last one is the date. And that's pretty easy to put down. So that's my penny on it. I might have another penny to go with it to make two cents.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. One no, Mr. Vila. The rest yes. That passes. First reading. Committee and board reports. Any committee and board reports? Mr. Klein is back, and it is your turn to take over this part of the meeting.
Okay, so hopefully we're good.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's good to be back. You know, it's always nice to take a little bit of time off, but I always want to come home, and that was my home. The Brick and Towel Playground, you know, it's getting such good use. I mean, when I go and I hear all the kids just having fun out there and stuff, it does my heart so good. But we'll hopefully next week, not this week, it's a short weekend, plus we've got to ask, we'll be prepping for some asphalt later this week. We're gonna try to hit the water department holes. But we'll be building that shelter and getting it done. We've sent out the bid out for the trail, it'll open up on the 13th, I believe. The EPA has given us the okay to rebid the Brownfield grant, so we have it up on the bid net.
Could you, Rick, can I interrupt you a minute? Just, Betty didn't know what the Brownfield was.
Okay, Betty, the Brownfield grant is a, you know, it's part of the super fund deal, just like what, you know, about tearing down these houses. And, but it was, it's a program where I saw that, you know, it's kind of like what Jeff was saying, you know, they need help. So, you know, every time, you know, it seems like, you know, a business owner, doesn't matter if it's downtown or or like old Inspiration Field, old South School. They always run into, the first thing is, they need a Phase 1 asbestos report to see if there's contaminants within the building. So that they know what they have to remediate. Or, you know, if they can afford it, you know, tear it out and move on with their project or tear it down, build them, whatever they're wanting to do. And so it's all this grant, and we applied for $500,000. And there's no match to it. But what this grant does is, you know, like, they'll come in and they'll assess, you know, like your building. You know, they'll come in, they'll assess it for the contaminations. They'll get a company in and they'll test. Then they'll come up with a cleanup plan with cleanup costs. Then they turn, you know, and that's all for free, that's part of the grant, the $500,000. And, you know, and we're doing do some of the big buildings, you know, around here. And then they'll turn you over to an EPA grant, and it's the first time I've ever seen one of those that's on an 80/20, where, you know, to get rid of all that contamination, you pay 20%, federal government pays the other 80%. So that's the Brownfield grant in a nutshell. You know, one of the buildings that we'll be hopefully working on will be Miller Hall, because, you know, we're working together with the hospital to see about that. Coming back together are open. I've had conversations with the new owners of Old South School and that, and they're interested. And so I think it's gonna be a program that can really kind of help the private sector, you know? At least we don't give a shot, you know, for just some effort, you know? That's good one. So thanks, Ed. We had a sewer manhole that we had to replace on Third and Highway 50, and those always concern me, you know, because they're all old brick ones, and we got a ton of them out there, and that's the second one this year that has caked in. We had one at 10th and Carson on Storm Sewer, and then now we had a sanitation sewer line. And that's just part of old infrastructure. And I saw that old infrastructure all across this United States. And I'll still say, "You don't like our roads? Go back east, please. Please, take a road other than a tow road." Tow roads, yeah, they don't have... But all of our interstate have potholes in them, and everybody is wrapped. So, but we have 275 kids in baseball, which that's a great thing, and still Level 1 water restrictions, don't water between 10 and 6, especially right now when it gives 100-degree weather, please. The new scoreboard was placed at Veterans Field. I don't know if you had a chance to go by and look at it, but it looks pretty good. And we had 249 kids sign up for the summer reading program, and 100 kids that show up with the prints on the Friday programs, which, you know, that just shows you the need is out there. And, you know, I know it's on the page, but, you know, I started seeing what was going on with the river and stuff, and, you know, just rest assured, you know, I've been watching that river since 1981. And, you know, I know a lot of the signs out there. And that'll be something I'll do for my life. If I see something like the 99 flood, you'll see me come back in and say, "Hey, you know, I think we don't have a flood." And that's just the engineering. And last Friday, I hit 24 years as the manager. That combines the time of Dan Oller and Congresswoman. And I can't believe that 24 years went by like this, so... Thank you. Well, it's been my honor to serve the citizens of this community, I'll guarantee it.
7:24.
7:24.
Question? Mr. Klein?
Yeah, man, we got weeds and patching going on.
That's my first question. Weeds over by where WW Feeds used to be?
Yes.
Can you explain what's going on with those?
What, the weeds?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, they're supposed to take care of it. They're in process.
But can you tell the people who is in charge? Is that a city thing?
Yeah, yeah, the police department has issued weed notice, you know, you got property rights, so, you know, we have to give them...
Yeah, but that's not our property.
No, that is WW Feeds.
And then further down the road, where?
Is Rick.
BNSF?
BNSF, and I don't know if they've entered that, I haven't checked that one.
Campers parking in the Walmart parking lot.
Nothing we can do, that's private sector unless you put out an ordinance.
But then that would go for all private businesses, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So our stance is to be, let the private business take care of, if they want people there.
It'd probably be challenged, too.
Oh, probably would be. I know, last time this came out, Don Rizzuto was the mayor, he went out to Walmart and started interviewing all the people in there. And he came back and reported to council, and he goes, "Do we want their sales tax? Because they're all spending big bucks, you know?" He said, "These people are pulling in and they're restocking." He goes, "How they spend tonight," but then they move on. He said, he did recommend it at that point in time, but that was then. In life, you know, this is now.
I'm a little bit confused, because on one end, they have no loitering, without on their parking lot side, they let campers just park in, they say...
Lotters don't shop, but
campers do?
Campers, you know, they restock.
The mosquito truck, what do we spend on that?
Right now, let's see, I'd put in, we're spending $13,000 on product, and then it's just the overtime for the guys to go out for country.
Don't we have flex time?
When you got minimum staff, I need them out during the day, too. Yeah, you know, it's just, we don't have enough people to let them off.
And then, did you get the chance to see the downtown area where the parking lot was repainted and...
Beautiful, beautiful. I really loved the way that they did the one on Santa Fe and the old Kellogg lawn, I was called it, but right there, my link here? Yeah. Between 4th and 5th. Thank you to all the volunteers that did that and to the Rotary Club.
And First Church was...
And First Church, yeah.
And then the next one is July 15th at 7:00 a.m.
Do you know where they're meeting?
I think at the same place, and then spread out from there.
Will there be future ones after that?
I don't know. Hopefully.
And then at 7:00 in the morning, right?
Yep.
To beat the heat.
That's all I had. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Klein?
Was that South School purchased by private or government?
By private.
Are they, did they indicate anything they're gonna do with it, or?
No. He realizes it has potential to have a lot of asbestos. But that's just because of the...
That would be where our Brownfield grant would fit, then.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein? If not, we'll move to governing body comments. Any governing body comments?
Weeds. Rick, the weeds are getting horrendous. We need to get...
They're growing by a foot by today.
I know, and we need to start giving people warnings.
Yeah, but they are.
They are?
We're trying to work with them, you know, I mean...
Well, yeah, we don't want to be hard on them, but we...
Because they could turn it around and say the same thing about us.
Did you, did you get one at 10th and Topeka? Rose old place?
I don't know. Ed, I did not check that one.
That is, that one there is bad, B-A-D.
Any other governing body comments? Not, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming out today.
Happy force to joy, everybody.